This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the July 18, 2022, regular council meeting in order at 7:00 PM. If you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance if you're able. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
I have two.
Two?
First, the Citizen of the Month under Mayor's Report. It's the life of me, I cannot remember to put that on the agenda anymore. And then remove new business C, Denver request for Civil War reenactment. They did not get anything to us for this meeting, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? With the one addition and one elimination, would you like to make a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor, accept the agenda with the addition of the Citizen of the Month under the Mayor's Report and elimination of new business asylum C.
So moved. Thank you. Counselor Webb, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Ash. Call the roll, please, Stephanie.
Karen Hilbert.
Aye.
Counselor Norman. Counselor Ash.
Hi.
Counselor Allen.
Okay, thank you. Moving right into presentations. Susan Wagner, welcome.
Thank you very much. Susan Wagner, 1311 Alder Street, Vernonia, Oregon. Thank you, Council and Mayor, for allowing us to get this on the agenda tonight. I am speaking here on behalf of the Senior Center for a fundraiser for turkeys for Thanksgiving. We are doing this, they are doing this separately from their normal envelope mail out in November because they don't want it to siphon off funds from that. They'd like this to be a separate fundraiser because it's pretty significant. It's about $3,500 that we're seeking. Sandy did ask me to run this, so that's why I am here. And we have received a $500 gift to match up to $500 in donations. We are also requesting that the city support this, as they have in the past. And as well as the city, we're also welcoming any councilors, audience members, or staff who would like to also contribute. This will be sent through Scott. We wanted to present this to the city first, give them a first chance at participating, and then it'll go to Scott, and we'll get it out in the paper, and then we'll do some publication on Facebook, et cetera. So we're hoping that this is a grassroots-type of fundraiser, and we've gotten some commitment already, which is really wonderful. So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
About how many years have we not given out turkeys? It seems to me it's at least two from the food bank.
I believe it's either two or three. I'm trying to remember if it was last year that I was on council that we did not. But prior to that, we had every year. And part of the problem is the timing of the fundraising has not been cohesive. It's just they're so afraid of taking away money that the food bank desperately needs for the food bank. This way, if we're doing it in July, it's like Christmas in July, Thanksgiving in July. We can publicize it differently, and people are more likely to give twice if it's far apart than a larger amount at once.
Jose.
When's the deadline for when you need?
That's a really good question. So.
Like when you?
We have not got this information from RNS. What the plan is, is that if RNS is not able to supply all of the turkeys, that people will be given either a coupon or a gift card specifically, or probably a coupon to whatever grocery store, Freddy's.
Well, Winco or something.
Otherwise, it'll be done directly through RNS, and RNS will provide them. Yes, the Senior, the Senior Center. As I said, 200 turkeys is what their goal is.
Okay.
It's about $3,500 total.
And when, like, when's your kind of drop dead date, whether it's a go or it's a not? Do they have one?
No, not.
Okay.
Probably October, I don't know, October 20th.
Okay.
Because I don't have the time to confirm the money. I don't see there being a problem. I mean, we've got to start at $500 already, so. Seems like.
We could always do a booth at Sam and Festible, too, to do a top-off grant or something.
That's what I'd do. I guess I'd go to Sam and Fest.
Well, and I, yeah, we could help, Sam Fest could help you out with that, pop-ups and such.
Stephanie.
I'll pledge $100.
Thank you, Ms. Stephanie.
Susan, is it vouchers they give out or turkeys they give out?
It's turkeys. We used to stand at the corner of beer and ice cream and hand out turkeys.
Okay.
They're just in that refrigerated unit there, so they'd get their main box of all the other pieces, and then they'd stop it, give us a ticket, and we'd get them a turkey, Toby and I. That's how we've done it.
In cash. They're getting food.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think a lot of times Winco does a thing, you buy $100 for the grocery, they give you a free turkey also. This is a thought, too. Somebody wants to get a free one, they're gonna buy groceries anyway.
Yeah, you know, I had approached Sandy asking whether or not turkeys were going to be provided. Because to me, I appreciate everything the Senior Center does. But to me, Thanksgiving without a turkey, even turkey breast, turkey leg, some kind of turkey, just, it takes away from the meaning and the intent and the inclusion of family and making people feel like they are still able to have a Thanksgiving. I mean, if they're already having to rely on food boxes, this is, it's just a piece of humanity to give them a complete Thanksgiving.
I remember one year the church was doing, you could buy a turkey or bring a turkey, and they were doing a thing, and that was kind of a good program. And what I'm getting at with the Winco thing is, it's a community that's not in need of, like, a lot of times I'll go to Winco and I'll spend 200 prepping for Thanksgiving, and they'll give you two turkeys. So I wonder if they would take a donated turkey, you don't need two.
So that would, I can contact Sandy about that. It's a, it's a challenge for space, which is one of the reasons why they've been doing it through, through RNS, rather than having them buy all the turkeys, take them to the food bank.
Okay.
Because they don't have enough storage space keeping those frozen.
Got you. Okay.
Did the city use the?
Yeah, we did.
City fund?
It actually came out of timber. The years, the last year you guys did it, so.
And, and the council, I think.
The council approved that last, that was the last time.
And I think council donated, too.
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, counselors individually donated.
Yeah.
There was years that the city couldn't afford it, and then everybody else just donated.
Yeah.
All the timber fund, yeah.
So they chose to take it that year.
So.
And where should people take their donations if it's specific for this?
So just make a note on it, turkey fund, and give it to the food bank.
Okay.
And Sandy will handle that. We wanted to make sure that the city was willing to participate and buy in before we went too far down the road in a lot of details. But I'm pretty sure we can trust the Senior Center.
How much did the city donate back when we were doing this?
$2,000.
I think it was 2,000.
Two, two, okay.
Yeah, and that, particularly at that time, that covered quite a bit of it, but there was still a shortage. So I know Bruce contributed, I contributed, Josette contributed.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Thank you for taking this on, Susan.
You're welcome, and, you know, hope to hear some. From Molly.
Yeah.
Gonna have to kill some trees.
Right.
Something with ARPA funds on this, Joe said, if we wanted to?
I think you could, being in.
It's a 501(c)(3).
Yeah, we can look into it and bring it back to your next meeting if you want.
Yeah. Hopefully, there, oh, go ahead.
Do you want more details by, by your next meeting as far as end date and exactly? Responsible for, you know, that?
I think you've probably given us enough with Sandy at the food bank and.
Minister can reach out.
Hopefully, the, you know, with everything else in short demand, and in the, this year, could be a problem. I know it was a problem getting turkeys last year. So, you know, I.
One reason we were thinking outside the month, relying simply on RNS being able to provide that to the families that they would have an option, getting that out of town.
Yeah. Good gesture. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, moving right into the Mayor's Report. And in second meeting of, council meeting of every month, we, we we take turns in choosing a Citizen of the Month, and just so happens to be Counselor Norman's turn this month, so I'll turn that over to Counselor Norman.
Okay, I picked Karen Miller. I've seen her way back at the old Senior Citizen Building working and helping out there, as well as she worked, helped them there and helped with the resale shop, and is helping them at the new one. So I felt it would be good to present her with it, as well as she has helped with where you read the voice, why they were doing that. She was helping post ad in the newspaper. So that was interesting to see sometimes where different people were reading the voice paper. So I thought that was quite a good deed to the community that she should be recognized for.
Do you want to make a little speech or what?
We'll let Josette.
You do this?
All right. Yep, see you shortly.
Oh, low battery, hold on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, congratulations. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Our community.
Yeah. I enjoy working with seniors. I always have. I think my parents kind of still expect for seniors in my grown-up years. And so, yeah, I appreciate the opportunity, whatever I have to do in town, especially with the voice, he's not here tonight. But I appreciate the avenue of, I get to write that article for what the seniors stand for and keep the seniors out of public view to keep them bouncing and what they do in this community as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Counselor Norman.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilor Committee Meeting Report.
I have one.
Okay.
Thursday, we held the cemetery committee meeting in the cemetery, which was a first for me. It was actually a lot of fun. The dog seemed to enjoy it also.
It was Bring Your Dog. Rebecca, Ben, JR, there was.
Mine was kind of naughty, had a little timeout for a minute, but. We talked about more, keep on the scattered garden. I see some information has come back on that, quite detailed. So there's quite a conversation on the scattered garden again. We talked about the rolling, what do we call it?
Porta Chapel.
Yeah, the porta chapel a bit. We talked about the aluminum poles a bit. Not much movement there, just kind of glanced over those. We talked about the gates. Looking at, hopefully get those fixed. We got some brick work to do to fix those. We talked about, oh, jeez, what else are we talking?
Breaking.
Well, a little bit. There was some theft up there, unfortunately, out of the shed, but. We also, oh, we talked about the high school kids joining up. They're gonna send a letter out, I think, in September, trying to get some high school kids to join on the committee, and scattered garden idea takes off, maybe do some rough out in the corner of the woods there, kind of a little trail through there. If, if, if it's a go, you know, we're still looking at it. And then Ben talked about some projects that the, that they could do as a group, too, get them involved and volunteering up there, finding all the markers and stuff up there that he uses to pull grid off of. So I don't know if there was much else that we talked about, but.
Pretty much it.
Yeah, it's just kind of the, mostly the same stuff, except for the high school kids kind of come up new, and the theft, obviously. I don't know what they stole out of there, weed trimmer.
Whacker and hedge trimmer.
Yeah, broke in the man door there. Hopefully, we get power and that security light going, maybe a camera up there, too. I don't know. Unfortunately, we seem to go rashes of theft in this town from time to time, so. Maybe he's a weed eater for sale cheap. Did he know?
We know, we have our serial number, might be ours.
Oh, wait.
Yeah.
Weed eater.
Yeah, power.
They had, yeah, they had the weed eater and hedge trimmer. They had the whole wheelbarrow full of stuff they were gonna take, and we think maybe the neighbor's dog went out and started barking, because it'll bark at us if we're even in that driveway there. And they left everything. They just left it and took the weed eater and the things they could carry out.
Oh, boy.
But we put a new lock on the outside of the door, so they'll have to cut a padlock and then pry the door to get in this time, but.
They broke the lock?
No, they just pried the door open. It's, the man door doesn't have a deadbolt in that building that never came with it. So we.
Oh, fuck.
Yeah.
They loved to add a good one with some three-inch screws or something.
Yeah, Mitch did. He added one that has the hidden screw plate, so you can unscrew it and get in.
No.
Yeah, you gotta really shorten one neck one, so it'll be really hard. You'd have to have the right bolt cutters to cut it, but. I think electricity and maybe a camera will help us out. Just so we could get a unit up there pretty easy without much expense, just for keeping track of stuff.
So where are we at on the flagpoles?
Well, the flagpoles are kind of, if you remember, we approved 10,000 for the porta chapel, and what's left over there, we're gonna try to purchase some flagpoles. So depends on if they're gonna custom build one or find one to purchase that's worth a darn. So I think that's kind of, hopefully, the direction that the committee will start looking into that. Shoulders or?
Well, we were gonna take some rough plans and get a couple metal guys to do, to bid us what they would make to beef, build a beefier one out of square tube, like, kind of like Evergreens, but not as industrial look to it.
That's a little bit, huh?
A little rough. And then, once we get those bids, we'll kind of know and come back to the committee with how many poles we can afford in doing that.
Thank you, JR.
That was it.
I went to the Parks Committee last month, so it's a long time ago now. Stephanie came and did a little training for them on, I don't know, what's that part? It's basically.
Oh, the general duties of the committee.
I was like, because. And then they are waiting for the results of the grant application in regards to the planning phase for the lake campground, and still a vacancy on the committee. And that's all I remember.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess I did have one, but forgot we skipped our first meeting. 28th of June. And again, I think, I think Stephanie was there for that meeting also. We talked about the, getting still the goal of all the committees together and going over that training and the interaction with the liaisons and how we get this to work. Let's see, they wanted to pass on Public Works Committee's desire to see a salary, that's on the salary issue, move forward. For city, no, for city staff.
It's the same thing Sam pitched.
Yeah.
Mad we haven't done the wage study.
Oh.
That's what he's wanting.
I don't know, there was something about a request for having Josette to come to one of her meetings. I don't know if that got passed on or not.
Oh.
Yeah, I can't even read my own writing.
I can show up. I was planning, their next one's gonna be the tours.
Yeah.
Maybe a follow-up one or something.
Yeah.
They're doing tours for the next one?
Chris is giving them a tour of the water plant and sewer plant.
Better.
Yeah, it's on their regular day.
Notice.
Yeah, where they're going, yeah.
I assume they took it to Angie, but Parks was saying they do want, they still are wanting to get every month for their meeting, a year-to-day on the budget for the Parks budget.
Okay.
But they had put in the request to her as UTD, which I think she thought was up to date, so she gave them like the whole New Year budget.
Oh, so they want it, they want a.
Actuals.
They want budget versus actuals monthly. Okay, I got it.
Anything else?
Nope.
I didn't have one.
I had a, I attended the Friday, July 10th Senior Board Meeting. Got a couple things from, I brought back to you from that meeting. The scout cabin was in dire need of a new roof. So they put out three bids, and it was just determined, noted on at the last board meeting, that a local contractor was the winning bidder, and it was Titus and Sons. So he'll put on a new composite roof, probably, hopefully, this summer. So that's one good thing to report. Last month, or the month of June, I believe, they, they served 583 meals, which is quite a few. They're doing really well in the kitchen. They do have the kitchen counter repaired. Let's see, oh, they're gonna have a fundraiser, August 20th, that's a Saturday. I imagine at 10:00 AM in the Senior Center parking lot for, for the senior group, so.
Kind of like an open-air market, but senior style.
But they'll competing, be competing with Saturday market people, but, oh, well, so.
Different products, I think.
So that's about all I have to report from the Senior Center, so. And if, getting back to Karen, you and your guests, you don't have to stay at the whole council meeting. You're sure welcome to. Just wanted to lighten all that. So, okay, that's all I have to report on the Senior Center. Any topics from the floor tonight?
I have none.
Okay. Set agenda for acceptance. Set agenda for approval, City Council Meeting Minutes for June 21st, 2022. Any questions or discussions? I had no issues. Would you like to make a motion to accept the June 21st meeting minutes?
I'll move that we accept the June 21st, 2022 City Council Meeting Minutes.
So moved. Is there a second? Counselor Allen, would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Allen. Counselor Ash.
Hi.
Derek Colbert.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Thank you. Any unfinished business tonight? Moving right into new business, Public Works Committee application, Tom Demant. And that is a position on Public Works, I believe.
Yes, it is. Tom's been attending some of the last meetings, so. Kind of a default member so far.
Okay, any, any questions on the application or discussion?
I looked it over. He said he was on the Parks Committee, but that must have been a while ago. I don't remember, but.
He said, he said cemetery. It wasn't my voice.
He was our cemetery employee.
Oh.
Yeah.
He used to be the caretaker.
Yeah. I need to put my glasses on, I wanna read that, then. I thought it said Parks Cemetery, okay. I don't know where I got Parks from there. I read it online, I guess.
Did your experience with Posse?
Yeah.
The application is free. I'll take that.
Kind of how Tom talks.
Yeah, yeah.
Like he says certain things.
And we need the bodies.
You need, need to.
That'll give us.
Membership.
That'll give us one quorum, I believe.
Committee's recommended them, right?
Yes. I don't know, they didn't have a.
They didn't submit anything.
They didn't submit anything, yeah.
That's why, let's get it in here. See, what you told me.
If I can get a, a consent from the council, I'll, I'll move forward.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Overall, what?
Okay, like, we, we're not a city council, I am a consent. Let me appoint Tom Demant to the Public Works Committee, so it's my pleasure to do that at this time. Congratulations, Tom. Okay, request from Fishhawk Cyclory.
So come on up and give your.
Come on up.
They have, they have your packet.
Yeah, welcome.
Well, I must say, first off, this is my first City Hall meeting, so it's gonna be a little awkward and cumbersome.
No, it won't.
Secondly, I was strongly suggested that I attend, but I'm basically open for your questions. I haven't got a presentation beyond what's been provided for you. I did overhear some concerns of differences between motorized vehicles and bicycles. And that is unfortunately quite the complicated topic between state and federal levels. All of the bikes in my rental fleet are Class II compliant. Federal restrictions. And insofar as I know, they are permitted on all state and federal trails. Now, the city of Vernonia can decide elsewise. There's always local. Excuse me, as I have a noun failure. There are, you know, local cities and towns can provide their own ordinance. But I do advocate and promote legal use of electric bicycles, primarily to enable people who are not as physically fit, people who thought their cycling days were done, to expand bicycling to a larger demographic. I've been in the electric bicycle field as a technician and an advocate for about 10 years now. And I think Vernonia is a wonderful opportunity to start up a small bike shop. Answer any questions you might have.
What is your name?
My name's Jeff.
Yeah.
I know it sounds a little unusual, but.
Well, under the paperwork, I see it really shows your name, it just.
Oh, that might have been oversight. It's, there was a decision, it's, it's okay. Those are copies of the information that I forwarded. My name is Jeff Grunder. This is my wife, Max.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Where do you live, Jeff?
We live up at Fishhawk Lake.
Oh, good.
So a little bit out of town. You are the closest town. And actually, Vernonia was one of the reasons. Um, and, uh, actually Vernonia was one of the reasons why we chose Fishhawk Lake. Uh, I'm from a small town in Maine. Um, for me, this is a lot like coming home again.
Yeah. So I did print out for you guys, this is off the Step Stewart website. Uh, can I ride an e-bike? And they do allow them, you'll see there. I did print it off because that, I knew that was going to be a question from the council. Are we permitting something that if they go that way would be unpermitted? And as of their website, it doesn't, it states.
I actually, um, have been thinking about this for the last couple of years, actually, with the, the, uh, e-bike coming, you know, very popular and, you know, golf carts around the, the lake and whatnot. And so I took the liberty of calling the manager at Step Stewart today and, and his name is, um, Aaron Rance. And real nice fellow. And I told him my concern about the e-bikes and asked him if they've ever had any big issues with the e-bike on Bank Vernonia Trail. And he said, not very minimal, very, not very many at all. And he kind of told me the protocol, which is, uh, most of it's on the sheet that Josette passed out. Um, he did say they do have a minimum of six foot wide path. And, and so because the, uh, Banks Linear Trail is eight foot, there's no problem there, so. But that's a state requirement that the path be at least six foot wide. Um, and you just go by your protocol. Equestrians have the right of way.
Absolutely.
And then it goes down to the number two category is pedestrians and the third category is bikes. And so, um, yeah, he was very receptive and glad that I called and excited about Vernonia and what's going on with the, uh, formation or the connection of the CZ trail to the Banks Linear Trail and right in Anderson Park. And the only issue we might have is city property like to Anderson Park, so. And that's still an eight foot wide path and, um, yeah, I, I was, um, after I hung up, I was a little bit more relieved. I mean, he answered some of my questions and felt better about it, so.
Yeah, it's, um, it's been complicated. Even in just the past decade, there's been a lot of changes. There was a lot of misunderstandings about electric bicycles at first. They were thinking they're going to be like dirt bikes tearing up the trails, kids, uh, riding havoc. Um, but as my primary demographic is my age and older, 50, 80 plus, um, and generally we don't get too crazy.
Jeff, relax, you're doing fine anyway. Um, what's, so what's the pitch here? I see where you got a, we got a red box outlined at the lake. You, are you wanting to set up shop there permanent or is it just on weekends or how's it work?
Well, uh, I decided to build a business inside of a 16-foot utility trailer because of the long off-season I'm cycling in the winter time.
Sure.
And while I eventually would like to get a frickin' mortar location, uh, I don't think that's financially viable at the moment. So I was thinking of a six-month, um, and I had been in contact, interestingly, with the American Legion. They were quite excited to share their lot with me. Um, but after a, a number of meetings, they did decide that a for-profit business and a nonprofits would be of interest. Um, at that point, I considered going to private sector. Uh, I've been in contact with a number of, uh, local business owners. Um, and, uh, any number of them actually suggested the lake. Um, and that I should talk to the council, um, not because of its ideal location, but also to encourage business with the other, with the ice cream stand.
Calypso.
Calypso. I was thinking of the pizza place. Um, I, I'm torn. I, I wanted to be more in town on a secondary street, closer to say the campground. Um, but the more I saw the lake and its potential, um, the more I thought it was actually quite an ideal location. Uh, we have the public restrooms there, there's food and refreshments, uh, beautiful lake and trail access. And if I understand that there's, uh, plans development for campground, if, if I'm not mistaken.
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so I thought that would be a nice mix, a good environment if you will.
Jeff, do you go other places or is there something you're just?
I'm just starting out. I work for a major, uh, e-bike business. Um, and decided to, well, urban flight, if you will, and, and Vernonia seems like a good place to do this.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Karen, the citizen of the month has a question.
So is this where you're going to be selling, renting bikes or?
Well, um, I will be renting bikes. I'm also a service owner.
Service.
Um, so I can service regular bicycles as well as electric. Um, go ahead.
So that's so renting class and servicing bikes.
Yeah.
The e-bikes by the hour.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So you can go rent it for an hour and cruise around and bring it back.
Um, which is also a great way to learn about electric bicycles because they are somewhat spending. And there aren't a lot of opportunities to try one before you think about buying one. And to be honest with you, the, the reason why I want to do rentals is, uh, it's a little bit corny, but the first time people ride one of these things, they come back and they're just like little kids again. It really does make you feel like you're a little kid again. It's, it's, it's what keeps me young.
How much is a bike for an hour?
Uh, well, there are three different price ranges, uh, ten to $20 an hour depending on the model you've chosen.
Oh, that's why it was in there. The big ones are soft seats. $20 bucks an hour, if I remember.
Well, that's a cargo bike with baskets and lights, um, the, the whole, there's even a passenger.
Oh, wow. It looked kind of fun to me, actually, so.
Yeah.
And I'm over 50, so I'm, I'm in, in your demographic.
Yeah, it's my primary demographic, yes. Well, bad hips, bad knees, uh, it isn't just age-related. Um, but yeah, it's, uh, during the summer, I took on bikes and I rode from Fishhawk to, that's a 50-mile round trip. I probably wouldn't have done that without a bicycle.
How long was that charge last for?
Well, I took two batteries. Um, the charge is usually good for about 25 to 30 miles, although that is variable to bike trains.
So if you guys are interested in moving forward, then I'd bring back to your August 1st. If that's something you're willing to entertain.
I have no issue.
Yeah, I think it sounds great.
So basically a vendor.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have a vendor pricing, we have a vendor that we're, I'm, I'm just trying to see what the thinking is. How do we keep this on a level playing field?
Yeah, apples, apples.
Yeah.
So we would probably take the days of the, the current vendor's fee and do the days that they're actually open. And then what does that equate to per day? And then the, he's, Jeff's potentially going to be a Thursday through Sunday business. So he wouldn't be open every day of the week.
And the trailer wouldn't be there on the off days?
The trailer would be there.
The trailer would be there until the end of season.
Yeah, so just everything we get closed up in safety to it every night.
Got a good lock?
I, I heard that there was some issues with the money machine being damaged there for the parking fee or am I?
They tried.
Well, there's just, there's just everywhere, you know.
Right, well, you double locked.
Yeah.
There you go.
Um, and, uh, one of the things that made the location promising was the campus actually. Um, I can, uh, give her the remote to my entry arm. So if it goes off by the stage, you can just shut it off. Uh, it's not dissimilar to car.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Have you met before?
I'm sitting behind you. Um, but if that would be, okay, I'm sorry.
So I have another question. Why was the location picked quite a ways away from everything?
Well, so the access currently, this picture doesn't show the new gazebo or whatever, but that is an emergency vehicle access. So we didn't want to crowd the park host having privacy from people testing out bikes right near her. And she's already crowded on the other side by calypso. So we're trying to just keep it open, give each spot their own spot. And his does open up to a, like a long, longer leaner.
Well, there's a drop ramp.
Yeah.
Yeah, for rear access.
So it didn't have to be right there. I just was getting it a little ways away from Suzie so she wasn't like crammed in and.
She was amazing. She threw that together in just a couple of moments as we were chatting.
It was kind of a best guess. It doesn't have to be right there. Yeah.
I was just curious. I wasn't saying it's not a good place. I was just curious. It seemed like it was. I got, I see the thinking. Just didn't know if you're going to have to park it in the grass and drag it and out of the grass.
Yeah.
No, it's pretty.
Yeah.
Um, very minimal. The power requirements are in that package. Uh, it would, I did the computations and everything was on full maximum, which is obviously impossible. Uh, 15 amp residential outlets would still suffice. Um, that includes all the bike chargers going at the same time, my music as loud as possible, which won't happen.
So we will have expansive putting in.
Yes, so we have talked about it, um, a couple of times. Suzie's install there really needs to be fixed.
I thought we were putting in a separate meter that was.
We already did that for, that's off the building.
Okay.
So the other flip side is we could upgrade the service there, put a separate meter off that service and just have a conduit going to Jeff. Because there's a lot of fixes that need to happen at Suzie's connection. The, just that your power is tilted, that the waters leak, all of that, fixing all of it.
Well, the, the, all the threads are like, it's just gone. It's only like one or two little.
Yeah.
Things that just need to be fixed.
Yeah.
That's just.
Which is doing that.
Spicking, oh, that should be easy.
Yeah. So that was the plan.
Yeah.
And forward.
Do you have a 50 amp or a 30 amp?
30.
50?
But I think.
30 or 50, I'm on 50.
Yeah.
But I don't know that it really, the pull is there for it to be, if she actually used all 50, I think it would pop it. Haven't you popped it?
No.
With your microwave and stuff?
No.
Good.
I can run the A C off, but the only time, like last year when it was 113, that it's tripped, tripped pretty, I think, well, I think it tripped one in my trailer.
Yeah.
That's what just couldn't keep up.
Yeah.
You're probably on 30 amp.
I'm pretty.
I'm on 30, I'm on 50.
No, but I, what I'm saying is, is it might show 50, but I think that's a 30. Because I think all the ones we put in at the time were 30s.
I think so.
That's why I'm saying if it's a, if it's really only pulling a 30, we should upgrade it anyway.
Because the plug in that the pigtail I have is, is supposed to be 50.
I know, the.
The plug-in can look and plug into my trailer 50 cord and then the 50 is plugged into the power outlet.
Okay.
They're different things. They're different heads. 30 won't plug into a 50 and 50 won't plug into a 30.
Right, well, no, but 30 will go into my trailer, the cord coming out of my trailer.
No, what I'm saying, sorry, is the outlet, the fixture itself that you are plugging your cord into is, they're different. But that's not anything to do with this, sorry.
So I think I'm, want it tested and I think it's not going to have the pull and I want it upgraded.
Oh.
Just for funsies, because it's necessary.
I had a quick something. You, when you talked with the side of Step Stewart about who had the, uh, on the trail, you said the e-bikes to go, to have priority over the walk-in.
No, no. The categories go, equestrians have the toll right of way over.
It's what?
Horses, equestrians.
Oh, horses.
Have right of way over any, and everyone else on the trail. Then the second level is pedestrians. And then the third level is bikes, bicycles, so.
Yeah, we've had some issues going on in the, you know, back in the day. If the people on a bike behind you would say, my mind was up to your right and now they're saying nothing. And it's like, you know, I'm a bit startled, you know, you know, they almost get hit, so.
You got helmets on your bike?
Everyone. Everyone wants a helmet.
And do you issue helmets?
Uh, I strongly suggest, and there's a, a waiver to which, uh, you have to deny that you were offered a helmet and that you said no, because adults are not required to wear, wear ones, but I provide them.
Okay.
Free of charge.
Well, any other questions for Jeff?
Yes.
I'm a little, I guess, parking is going to add a bunch more parking to the lake. You know, hopefully we got enough over on the side to cover this. Um, I guess the other would be, like he said, Legion Hall, he thought was a good spot, but the city has that lot next to Legion Hall. Could be another backup.
That was actually brought up. It's a beautiful location. There is one cache, electricity. So.
Maybe that to grow up the power.
Yeah, if there was power, that is a beautiful location.
Right.
I think you might do better at the lake, my honest opinion. Just because people like me might walk down and go, let's go for a ride.
Yeah.
And back.
It's, it's, it's an interesting, there's advantages to, uh, just about all of the locations in the area. Um, again, it's why I'm trying, uh, why I'm setting up business in Vernonia.
So when were you looking to hope to get started?
Um, you could see, about four months ago. Um, as soon as possible. Uh, I understand that things do need to be attended to, um, but I'm ready to go, um, as soon as I get approval and police grid.
So probably going to take us some time with electricians, that would bury a line for the pedestal power.
Well.
But could he use a generator in the meantime? I don't know if he's got one, but.
I mean, I do and I could, but it would be terribly annoying for everyone.
Okay.
And I don't really want to do that.
I didn't know how quiet, if you had a Honda or not. What are your charging hours, Jeff?
Uh, well, the charging hours would usually be after hours after I'm closed at night, um, as well as during business hours, depending on the number of rentals I've sent.
Is that an eight-hour charge? Is it on a timer? How do you work it?
Uh, well, they're all smart chargers, uh, so from complete depletion, it would be about four and a half hours, um, from dead state to fully charged. Um, unfortunately, that's not usually how it works. You don't usually deplete them all simultaneously, so you stagger your charge loads. Um, so I usually plug them into the chargers, walk away. Do you have a safe buffer, about six hours?
The reason I asked, I was just curious if you talked about the service that comes off of our park host trailer. I didn't know if we could try using that in the meantime or.
Yeah, I was.
If that would be permissible to all.
I think if we're moving forward, we could get Blake to do something pretty quickly.
Need a 110.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I need.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, I don't even have an air conditioner because I've got my doors open all day. It makes no sense. So it's added, again, it's, it's quite low power consumption. One residential 15-amp household outlet would be fine.
Do you, you take chargers?
Take payment on one of those old, old things or is?
I did, I did, yeah.
Well, we'll see what we can come up with.
Excellent, thank you. Um, because I neglected to put my name promptly, did you want a business card for contact information or?
I have the business cards. They were hooked to this. They just didn't get copied on the.
Okay.
All right, no worries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Nice, welcome.
Thank you.
You and your wife.
So my understanding, there's consensus to bring back to you guys on the August 1st meeting, the agreement and the fee.
Yep.
Opposed.
Sure.
That okay with council?
Yeah, and then you probably need to okay to move ahead on getting power in, right?
Yeah.
So you need a motion on that or we're going to be spending a little money.
Yeah, you're just bringing.
Yeah. You're just bringing back, we're just bringing back your permit. We want to move on power before I bring.
He hasn't signed the lease yet.
Yeah, but. Well, if we wait till August 1st, as with power, he's not going until the end of August, probably. That's what I'm saying.
Well, we should discuss rates and we might not like the deal. I mean, I know we're charging the other vendor and he's gonna be there less. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah. He'll be there almost half the time.
So personally, I'd be okay to let him try it for the first six months for a hundred a month.
In plus power costs or including?
Plus power costs. That'd be my, that was right off the top. I'd like to see him be successful and.
Wasn't he supposed to, I thought when I talked to him before that he was, is he not putting it over by the bike station?
No, he's putting it in between. On the other.
By the swing set.
In between you and the, here. This is you, Suzie. The white is you. The red is Jeff's square. I want, I didn't want it crowded where it's stuck in between. It's already crowded enough.
Real close to that wide gravel spot, people fish off there.
So on the other side of that, the, that hole, that light pole.
I can't see that. It's already pretty.
Two trees are in between you. Two cherry trees.
Is it like a blue spruce or?
Oh, that's.
Tree there. Pass that. Pass that. Oh, by the big tree.
It's in front of the water. The whole map is water. I have water.
Right by the water.
The light, but it seems that, that's right.
So maybe, maybe that's it. If that's our, our pole, there's also an option to do electrical from there.
I mean, am I, am I, am I way too cheap? Is there, what's everybody thinking on?
Well, I, I agree with you. I want to be successful, but I think we have to have fairness in what we're charging our vendors. If you were not discriminating.
Yeah.
Of one against the other. I think it goes, that's idea of taking what our vendor rate is currently.
Yeah.
Which I can't remember off the top of my head, but. For six months.
I think it's 300.
I think. Remember 300 and if he's gonna be about half, so it'd be about 150.
Yeah. Potentially.
Potentially. Whatever your days of operation a month would add up to.
Right.
Is there any way to send him back a little farther? Or pushes?
Not really, because he needs flat service for them to get on and try out the bikes.
It'll be as necessary. Right?
Yeah.
Fuck my only, 300 or was it 200? Cause your memory might.
I think it's 300 plus electric.
I think, I'm happy to let staff determine based on the percentage of time that it'll be.
Well, I'm trying to get a ballpark for this gentleman. It's not gonna get sticker shock if it comes back. I mean, I think we're talking pretty minimal rent here to give him a chance to see if it turns out.
Yeah.
So if it's 300 and you did Thursday through Sunday, that'd be $160 a month.
Okay, $160 a month.
Plus electric.
Plus, plus whatever they figured electric's gonna come to.
What, is that scary?
Well, it seems about right. When new business is all scary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not too scary though. The West Oregon part could be scary.
Cause we're gonna be telling our staff to move ahead, put an electrical in for you. So we're gonna be incurring a cost. We want you as a tenant to recoup our costs. But it has to be fair to the other vendor, you know, in town that, or, I mean, I think we kinda gave him a break.
Yeah.
And so.
Well, we've, we've made the lake more enjoyable for the citizens.
And we have.
We're not into money making business per se on every little thing we can.
We're just in the not losing money business.
We're the not losing. And make, you know, but make a little bit for the lake to get the fountain fixed or the spigot or whatever. That'd be good too.
Yeah.
Um, we gotta remember too, vendors in some instances are taking places over brick and mortar, which would be paying taxes. So that's one of the things we have to weigh.
But if he's bringing more people to the lake, we get parking.
Yeah, we get to find our.
Wildly successful, Jeff. And we see you driving a Lamborghini. We might be.
It's gonna probably be a Tesla. It's gonna probably be a Tesla.
There you go.
Yeah, no, there's the, yeah.
I, I know what you can get a little room for right now. So, you know, three to 500 bucks for a little tiny space over there if you want it right now.
Couldn't fit any bikes in there though.
I don't think anybody wants to start off from downtown, but you might get a few. I don't know. Might be good for bicycle repair.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I'm attempting to lean a little heavier towards the rental aspect because it is, to be honest, a greater revenue generator. The service rates got low because I presumed that would be mostly local. The rentals would be likely mostly first. Yeah, but there's also the space limitations with long-term repairs. I can only take X number of repair things with the space that I have. Um, so I have the presumption that first you sort of test the waters, not just for myself, but for everyone involved. If it becomes a horrible inconvenience for our wonderful campus, you know, an alternate location would need to be sourced if it was, parking was an issue. So we have an interesting experiment.
Knock, knock, knock. Can I rent a bike for you?
I'd be your first customer.
I've not rented e-bikes in under trailer for you since. Unless you put it to work for you, you know.
Okay, so it sounds like we need a motion to move forward with an agreement and what's in agreement for next meeting?
I'm looking for, I'm, I'm happy to bring you guys an agreement if there's just consensus, but I would like a motion if you want me to work with Blake to figure out how we get that electrical need and what the cost of that would be. Cause I'd wanna start that wheel turning right now so that August 1st, I'd say, it's all set up. This is what it'll cost us. This is what the agreement says. Jeff's willing to sign it. Then we are a lot further down the road, August 1st.
I'm good with that.
So motion to require staff to bring back additional information at the next meeting to include an vendor agreement bid from electrical and will also do updated park resolution. Drive vehicles, we'll fix that. Correct? Is that what I heard?
Yeah.
So we're just looking to move to get the quote from the electrician or actually to move forward with the electrician?
I think probably just the quote, it will be enough because it's gonna be a really easy drop in. There'd be nothing to just. Yeah.
I will move that we.
As long as Blake knows he's moving forward with it.
And if it's a long ways out, he goes for the really long extension cord.
Yeah.
I will move that we request staff to bring back the user agreement and the electric quote at the August 1st meeting.
Okay, motion was made.
I'll second that.
And second it. Do you call the roll please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hooper?
Aye.
Council Ash?
Hi.
Norman?
Aye.
Council Allen?
Aye.
Council Wes?
Aye.
Houseberry.
Good. Thank you.
Jeff, just cause I run my big mouth doesn't mean that's gonna be the exact dollar amount. So I wanted to give you a ballpark, real close anyway, probably.
And one last question. At this point this year, I'm hoping to primarily establish my presence in the community, get the business set up. The best months have kind of gone for our bicycle business. So for the fall.
Oh, yeah.
I'll take what I can get. But I'm hoping to basically establish myself, get a good solid footing in the communities and then come in fresh in the spring. When everything is all ready to go. So thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll come down with my wife and my mom and dad. We'll all go for a bike ride.
Helmets.
I'll sign the waiver. I grew up with no helmets. I'm still alive. I got a knot on my head though.
Okay. Moving on. Business from departments.
So you guys have the public works report. Mr. Birch went through the things that have been accomplished in the last quarter.
Saw that?
And then just some updates on paving and that. We have one utility worker through water distribution, one in wastewater collections, and the other two are studying and ready to take their first tests.
I had a question on the water plant being shut off at six or seven. Is there not an automatic shut off? Or who's doing that?
No, whoever's the on-call person comes and does it.
Oh, is that.
Rotate.
It rotates?
Yeah.
Per week or per day or how they?
Uh, per week. So there's always one person scheduled to work the weekend. They typically take a day off in the middle of the week. So we don't pay overtime.
But it just doesn't shut off when it doesn't need to pump. It just keeps going? Or how's that work?
Yeah, cause not every bit of it's automated. There's a lot you can do automated. You can watch it remotely, but the actual shutdown is not automated.
Oh.
Just never, I think it'd be pretty funny to get it all dialed in that way. Cause it wasn't originally constructed for that kind of shut off.
Do all the somebodies who come back live close? Is it like a pretty short amount of time that they have to come back from that?
We all live within two miles. So we're all in town people.
Okay.
So it's 200,000 gallons a day. Am I reading that right?
Billion?
Yeah.
Point two million.
Point two, it says so.
Point two million gallons. So it's 200,000.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
The metric, one or two million. Okay. Is that because of our storage tank capacity that it has to, just to kick on to fill the tank? Or is there a floating tank? Or do you know how it works?
So what do you, why are they running it more? Cause people are using more water. So they run it longer into the night to fill up the reservoirs and then they can shut it down. And then it basically comes out of the reservoirs into people's homes and takes that. They're taking that much time to fill it up to the cap that they want for the next day's usage.
What they're saying is they shut it off when they went home. It might get too low.
Right. Then they'd be pumping it for more hours. So they, they're currently leaving it on and someone's coming back in the evening to turn it off to produce the amount of water the citizens need.
There's water in gardens and lawns and.
Yeah. And just more homes. There's more users than we've had before with the homes that we just saw up on Louisiana, right? Last year, none of those homes existed. So now we got potentially another 4,900 gallons a month coming out of the system for each of those homes.
So that's.
More if they're a heavy water user.
A 10, 50% or so, huh?
He's probably ball marking a little.
His parking.
No, I wouldn't say these are exacting numbers. We should have all kinds of money in our water fund.
How many do you usually start once?
That's probably a Jeffrey thing, which probably happens when he wakes up, which is about probably 5:30.
Oh.
Cause he, he doesn't wait to start it. He, he's up early and in there.
I'm just trying to get a feel for how many hours.
But I think it's probably 5:30 when he, when he gets up and gets in there. But I have to ask.
See on the river gauge. I guess I can look closer.
Yeah, right? When it starts doing it.
Any other questions or discussions on the public works or?
The new curb, curbs point swell a week ago.
So remember when we put in the stormwater system, we didn't want to put in the big huge overflow pipe with the big hood. So they redesigned it and they are treating that little last section of weed with a stormwater swale. So they have like a curb inlet and that whole planter strip was constructed as a swale. So it will naturally filter the water that comes off that section of the street. It's about like the rock, then it has a growing medium. And the, the swale as well as the open at the end that needs trees is gonna be planted in the fall pro bono by the engineers interns. They're gonna plant that, the skate park swale and the kind of forest they had to cut to do the stormwater project. So that was kind of a cheaper solution than doing the huge overflow pipe that was rarely gonna get overflow. So they went with the curb cut and in place swale. And that curb got poured so that when we go to redo the road, that that last section didn't have anything when the Rose Avenue project was constructed. Just.
I just haven't seen it. I guess I never really looked at the swale. I'm trying to, still trying to figure, is that the end of weed or is it up against the senior center where the, you drive in or?
So well, all three of those buildings on we have their own stormwater retention ponds. There's a weird from the, so if this is the apron of the food bank where you drive in, from this edge apron to the loading dock, there was no treatment of stormwater. So they turned that planter strip into the swale, poured a curb and did a curb cut for the stormwater to go into that curb cut, into that swale and then filter down into the.
Okay.
Just that little section didn't have a treatment component and be on the up and up. The engineers really wanted it to, so. Uh, John Swart put the, our guys did the swale building with the different layers and then John Swart did the curb.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on public work? If not, thanks. Thanks Jeff for helping with the work. Thank the crew for us for putting in the dam safely again.
Yep.
Yes.
They were adamant, get up early morning, get it in.
The water must have been really going because by the time they got the boards in, it didn't take long.
No.
To fill up.
It's fast.
The last couple of years, you know, I mean, you, it takes till like early evening before water starts coming in the waiting pool. Not.
No, it was.
Not last week.
Yeah. The kids were jumping in it pretty short.
In fact, there was a guy swimming in it that night. Went down there.
Before I got off work.
Yeah.
Looks good down there.
Any word on their new truck coming in yet?
No, I, I'll have to ask. I haven't asked about the truck in a while.
Jeff got an update, but I don't remember what he said was.
I drove through there Saturday, Sunday, Monday. I don't remember what. I didn't see a truck sitting around though. Think it got pushed out late.
I thought it did too. I, I put it on my list to get a truck update.
It was October, but I'm not positive.
I know. I can't remember what he said last time.
Okay. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. 13 Master Fee Schedule update. Can be common page 20 through 20. Any discussion or questions about the Master Fee Schedule?
When I looked at it again, I thought, why isn't it highlighted or something? Or what changed?
Utility rates.
Is it the utility rates?
That's it.
We didn't put in the 35.
It was last time.
Oh.
Thank you. Good night.
Quick calculator based on their new budget. But no, power change.
Yeah, we kind of planned this coming out of the budgets that we. Everything here in July, then we, this meeting specifically was to adopt the new rates into the Master Fee Schedules.
What it ended up working out to be total, you said $8?
Approximately about $8.10 for the standard bill increase total, water and sewer.
Water and sewer.
So the committee pulled that money back from the savings funds to try to keep it at $5. So it wasn't such a big hit. And then when I was gone. And then when I was gone, I read in there that you put 56,000 aside again. And made it go to the $8.
I think that was 56. That, that number is 56 total, I think, in those two accounts.
Yeah.
Restoring, I'm just talking, it was basically restoring 45,000.
Yeah, that was reserves and?
They took 45,000 out.
Yeah.
Of it. I thought we transferred 50 something.
Well, no, because it was two things. It was the facilities reserve and the operating reserve. And they, they took them both down to like 6,000 and something each.
Right. Well, I understood the five and then I remember one of the committee members decided to charge 10 more thousand for administrative fees. I told him that's going to cost another dollar. So I don't see that person in here tonight. So that would be of $6, but I was like a little surprised when I saw the eight something.
Well, the tricky part is if you guys as council were going to let that stand, you would have to change your current policy, which you guys set aside saying this much will go in on an annual basis. So it was kind of, they put you in guys in a kind of a pinch. You're either changing policy or reversing their decision, one or the other.
Right. And I understand all the issues of our numbers didn't seem to jive for a while, finding money here and there. Wish there was a better way of doing that somehow. We could change the year-to-date on water or I don't know if there's a way of changing year-to-date on our franchise or not our franchise or our water and sewer type bills where we have all the data before we go to this process.
The budget process?
It's really hard because you're on a June 30, July 1 fiscal year for your, the business.
And we start.
On the day or something. And then you're on a calendar year for the data gathering, for the what, what we, I mean,
Projection.
I guess you could move it and make your year start. But I mean, you could change it so they line up better, but you're always going to be one month behind just because of people haven't paid their bill yet. So you really, it's like one of those things you're banking on, but you never know for sure until all the bills that come in or late fees or whatever people.
Don't know until the 30th of June.
Yeah. And you don't know each month until either people are current or late. How it goes in the?
Yeah, I probably wouldn't, I guess, I don't know. I guess my issue, the hardest issue is the inflation under the Biden administration is a 40-year high. So everybody's cost is just enormous living up here. And then to hit with the $8 raise on the water, it's just kind of, I don't know, it's hard for me to swallow, I guess, but.
I, I don't have such a problem with it, even as a person that's bill's going to go up $8 because we're not, there's no fluffing stuff in this budget. We're not buying some fancy new thing. We're not making something pretty. It's the bare bones of what it costs to make the water and treat people's sewer. It's not like anybody's got a golden anything to go with it. So it's really, I mean, I feel justified in saying to the people, this is where all our money goes and we don't blow it. I mean, we're spend thriffs on that kind of stuff. We're not gonna.
Remind me what we paid for a third or whatever that was of the new truck out of what fund was it the reserve fund for operations or what we pulled?
I'd have to go grab my budget.
It was water, sewer and parks.
Yeah.
I know, but I mean specifically, was it one of the funds that we saved money for, for operate or was it just general fund?
I'd have to, do you want me to go grab my budget? I have no idea without it.
I'm wondering how much of a hit it took that we won't have next year, you know?
I think we took those out of reserves, I think.
Reserve funds, parks, water.
Yeah. Operating. So we didn't increase, we didn't increase the reserves to backfill that. We only put in what was the annual chunk.
He had decided his policy annually we're putting in under that plan, a 10-year plan.
So didn't, doesn't really formally hit the, the rate payer. They're not paying more because we got a truck.
That's what I was getting at. I didn't think we did.
No. Yeah, because you don't, you don't take the one-offs out of your operating. That isn't, you can't do that and function very well. So we don't, the one-offs are project base come out of the reserves where there's not going to affect the rate in that moment.
And that's kind of the beauty of the reserves is they act as that cushion. Otherwise
Would.
off that pickup without having any reserves.
Right.
And right at the rate pair.
Yeah.
Or.
Just passed it through.
Or not having the pickup.
Right. Right. Or charged up a year and then bought a pickup when you collected all the money.
No one wants to see the rate go up, but if the cost of providing the surface is going up, it's not expected or sustainable for the city to subsidize utilities.
Well, my question is, was the budget committee notified of the change that happened?
No, because they're a separate entity.
They are aware of it. We discussed it in public works committee.
Well, but I'm saying as the budget committee, they hand it over and then what council determines are two separate entities. So they don't require.
I can't, I just.
They knew, they knew it was coming down the pike anyway, I think. I think.
The minutes.
Yeah. No, but I mean, before the meeting even, I think they knew council was not going to go against our policy. They were going to revert it.
These minutes don't get posted until we approve them. So there's no way the publics has even seen this. That sparked the problem with reading the minutes.
I guess they could play some other meeting.
It was in the paper.
Well, Scott tattletaled on you?
Yeah. He referred me at the stake.
It's reporting.
And the recordings on the YouTube. So they could have heard it too.
I guess that's where my head is at. They have access to it.
Anybody who cares about information was notified that the budget wasn't in the status.
That's fine.
The paper, it's on the website.
Well, I know, I know. People are going to get sticker shock, I'm going to lie.
Yeah.
It's dropped every month though, because nobody's bill stays exactly the same. It adjusts every single month.
Oh, I know.
How much water they use.
Mine's probably the biggest around.
It did say travel for the holidays is the best way.
Yeah.
Having people live with me during COVID. Do I get a break for that?
Right. Potter said he's out. He's leaving his house. He's not coming. He's not having anyone over. He's saving the water.
And we doubled our people for those, uh, November, December, whatever it was.
Right. Are charging your guests rent?
There you go. He got a surcharge for water.
Come stay.
You know, I, and yeah, nobody likes to see the rates go up, but it's a double-edged sword. We have been lowering rates for, I don't know, five.
Well, we.
Five years.
After we paid off the sewer loan, we, we reduced it by $20.
Yeah. Which has never been done.
Yes, and that's what I kind of.
So there's been, every time there's been, uh, just about all reasons to reduce with budgetary reasons. We, whatever the calculator spits out, we've been going with. And, and so, you know, yeah, we had, I think there's some inflation built in here. We had some extra costs in water last year that ate up some revenue and, um, there's kind of, you know, some shifting around in the budget and it just, it's where the chips fell this year.
Yeah.
And, uh, I don't think we do anybody a service by not following our policy and keeping those reserves going. Cause one of these days they're going to be very glad this town has a fair chunk of money in reserves when we brought off a sizable project. We're not.
Have some anomaly, some crazy expensive piece of equipment.
Yeah.
What's working and we have to replace it. We won't be instantly hitting the rate payers with, hey, we need this money.
That's right. Some, and, and like we'd been saying, we knew this day was kind of coming because we had been down on a downward trajectory on rates. We cut out all the fat out of the budget. Some of that is, you know, the cash carry forward gradually being ate up. And then the day in reckoning was this year that now we're headed the other way. And some of that's because we did probably cut a little more than, we probably forecasted it had quite as accurately as we should have seen this coming, but the rate payers got the benefit of it and now we've got to pay the bills.
And it's still maintaining our fiscal, uh, being fiscally responsible.
Yeah.
That started in 2016 when we started the reserves.
Yeah, Sheila was asking all about the loan that the rate review, she really, we had to pull loan sheets and I mean, we got, the rate review was pretty thorough. So they were, I mean, her and Sam were two of the voters at the budget committee. They were on the rate review. They're the ones that proposed these two out of three of the voters. Uh, other than yourself, JR.
So I understand you didn't come up short now after all, we hit our projected, what we thought we'd get for revenue.
Came out plus 11 grand or so, I think.
Yeah. Okay. So the shortfall mostly is the reserve that we want to put in. The extra reserve that we want to put in.
It wasn't extra. It, what really hit us is all the work in water. The salaries that happened in that budget were more work than we had anticipated in water because of all the big main breaks.
So how much did sewer go down is what I'm wondering. And if all the hours were in water, then sewer should add a savings.
No.
When I asked Angie, she didn't have the numbers on that. I was hoping you did.
Well, I wish you would tell me before these meetings. I would have brought my budget.
Base actually went up 50 cents.
Yeah.
And again, what we're not looking at is those inflationary factors that are probably already hitting this. Cause we did pull about 20 grand the sewer budget.
Yeah.
But evidently the inflationary factors are still pushing us a little above. And I think the consumption went up 10% on sewer.
20 cents or something?
Yeah, it was 235 to 245.
Oh, 10 cents.
10 cents. So it's, and, and the other thing that's hitting us was $2.25 is on that sewer loan. This is why we're doing this process different this year because last year that was a projection. We thought, I mean, evidently there was a mistake there.
Yeah.
On the projection. So
We didn't.
We did the water rates and I think we did a reduction on the sewer loan last year. And it came up short. We came up short.
I never went to, we didn't have a rate review last year that I'm aware of. Because we, no, I think we didn't last.
We did, but it was like, uh, here's what the calculator spit out. It wasn't a gathering. The year before we didn't. And then you guys, there was upset about that.
And again, these projections, you have to have faith in your staff. I mean, this is, you know, and they are doing their best. And that's why we changed this. How she's going to use assholes. We were, Ben and I were actually talking of suspending the forgiveness on the water and sewer loans for one year, the extra money that, that is actually, those rates are act, well, the sewer is the actual rate now. It's at 20, $20.60. That's what the actual amount of revenue we need to pay the loan. On the water. Hot because of every time we get new housing, we don't forecast that into these rates. And so we collect extra money over years' time. We take that extra money and subtract it from the required monies to meet that loan amount. Because of that projection was off last year on the sewer loan, we didn't, we actually went negative a little. And so that's why that, that, there's $2.25 of that eight. The year after that's going to, that's going to come back off if we have any housing development this year. There will be extra money because of that factor.
Cause you're banking on every customer in your projection. Current customers you have being on every month and paying a thing. Well, that's not reality, especially with rental, rental properties and especially with snowbirds. They'll turn it off sometimes for two months. Sometimes they'll stay in Arizona for four months and you've lost four $2.25 things that were going toward, you know, you've lost four of those rates for that one customer. So you're doing your best to project how to collect what you need, but there's always those variables you just can't project.
It's a guess.
Yeah.
I know at one point we were talking that sewer would probably go down, but that didn't happen. So.
Yeah, evidently due to the inflationary factors, I mean, it was 50 cents on the base.
Yeah.
Works, which is, you said 20 for the base. Yeah, from 2225 to 2295. That don't make sense. It's more than 50 cents.
Maybe it's 70 cents.
Didn't do my math right.
70 cents.
No, but the two, the sewer loan 1860?
Yeah, sewer loan was 1835.
Okay. So there, there's your two.
$2.25 right there.
Yeah.
Like I said.
Okay, so this.
Falling year, that, that increase is probably going to fall back off.
Because you'll have the collected all the expected.
Right.
And you'll just, it'll be a straight across the board next year.
Yeah.
For consumption?
For the loan. Loan.
Yeah, I'm a loan.
And, and we did this because for two years or maybe more, maybe it was four years, we collected $11,000 too much and we ended up having like $22,000. And Sam was like, you should not hold on to the rate pairs money. So we went the other way and minus it and, and kept it where it was. Well, it was a little short. So it's, you're playing that game with not collecting too much of the rate pairs money that you don't need and not collecting not enough.
And you know, the city could have just said, ah, we'll just hold on to that extra funding towards the end of the loan and then just use it to pay the loan off.
Right.
Hey, I guess. And instead they gave it back to the rate payer. So can't harp about it too hard.
No, and I think most other cities would just, oh, it needs to go up 10 cents, round it up a dollar.
Yeah.
I mean, they kind of ballpark. They don't go nearly in the weeds the way we do. We go in the weeds serious about all this stuff. We're pulling up old reports, finding ghost money and trying to find all the little hiccups.
And yeah, inflation where it is right now, if it continues, we're not going to be happy next year. I can tell you that.
No.
But I don't know, you know, we had, this town has to run like a business.
Yeah.
We're doing, there's no flush funds to dig into. I mean.
If you run it like a business, you're not collecting enough to update anything.
Right. And that's why we do the reserves.
To update.
Yeah.
We're, I think, being pretty conservative in that. I mean, a true business.
Right.
And they'd be doing at least 15% return on investment here.
Yeah.
Any other discussion or questions on the master fee?
Let's see, where is that? I need a motion. Yes.
Motion to op resolution number 2022 dash 15. Resolution providing for adoption of a new and revised master fee schedule and rescinding resolution 2022 dash 12.
So move. Counselor Webb, is there a second?
All second.
And been seconded by Counselor Ash. Could you call the roll please, Steph?
For Alan?
Hey.
For Brad?
Hi.
Hi.
Norman?
Hi.
Question carries.
Okay. Any correspondence? I did get an email from Mike McCauley from League of Cities today about, um, let me think real quick. Our participation in voting. Did you see that Stephanie?
Jim McCauley?
Jim McCauley.
Yeah, I, I saw that one. Hold on.
And we have a deadline. I think it was August.
So for League of Oregon Cities.
League of Oregon Cities.
The priorities ballots.
Right.
So did the other of the council not get them?
I saw it. I thought they were wanting someone to run for open position or.
So the, the priorities in which League of Oregon Cities goes and fights on the small cities behalf at the state legislature. This is a ballot for electeds to be able to put their two cents in what the priorities of the whole will be. So if you got that and you're interested in doing that, August 5th is the deadline. So they kind of say, is it water scarcity? Is it homelessness? Is it these? What are they fighting for, for the bigger group? If we don't participate, then the bigger towns, what their priorities are is what ends up happening. So that's one reason why it's worthwhile.
The board members and where the. The board members and where they're from, that's probably what will dictate what's going on.
Their whole board is directed by the main priorities that they do at this conference. So that's why they ask for everyone to contribute.
Is it a, is it a questionnaire that has examples or they want you just to come up with things?
So, um, it's a legislative priorities ballot. There's, um, seven policy committees and then the whole legislative priorities, you can click the link. And then how, um, typically what they do is they, the council usually, and we've done this in the past, I think. We've brought you the list of priorities. Our councils picked their top whatevers and we've sent it in on behalf of council.
But now they send it to each individual?
It's saying the city.
No, it says usually it's one collective ballot. They send it to all of them individually. But typically, and it says right here, the ballot should be completed electronically and it's usually one version of this is this community's priority. Yeah.
Yeah, it says this, every city is limited to a single vote.
Yeah. So you got to vote as a team, what your top priorities are from, and you can access theirs on that email. So maybe at your August first, you guys review those and we could put on an agenda. You could vote for your top priorities at that meeting or something.
So we want to bring, you have access to the list of what they are, right?
They do too. It says click here. You can click right there.
Here, yes.
Why, why I'm asking is we can send it to them. They can rank them and then we can tie it up at the meeting and say, okay, this is your answer.
Oh, yeah. So we could send you a separate email with that priority and you could do your top and then just send it back to us.
And then we want to tie it up and tell you what your results are.
You want to do that?
Sounds good.
So we'll send it to you. Yeah.
Let me just.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's due on May fifth.
That email just came in today, so.
I saw it. I had, I had only skimmed it and get that one.
I saw it. I think I got about a paragraph down into it.
Yeah.
Talking about appointing someone.
Okay, administrative report.
Okay, so, um, transfer switches in. The city just has to install two ballards in that trash enclosure area so that it meets electrical codes and no one backs into the transfer switch or hits it with something.
Big a ballard you need. Got a hundred of them probably.
Oh, I'll have to check. Blake was supposed to get me the spec because he, he knows the electricals.
Some of ours are big though.
Hey, it might work. I'll let you know. Um, skate parks. So the poles have been installed. The goal is that Blake will be there on Wednesday to energize them. Um, so it looks like everything's going good there. Um, downtown trees. So we just, we talked about, talking about with the other counselors, what the trip with Katie was like at this meeting. Um, so I said, you'll, discussion will happen this evening. And then I have not gotten the feedback from two of the owners. The Browns would be okay if it was a six foot opening. They only would probably have one tree in front of them. So I'm really waiting for Dana with his kind of long section and okaying the openings there.
Browns is great on?
Yeah. Dan was okay with associate or appropriate trees and that kind of opening, but he's the type that would go pick it up too. So it's kind of. Um, OPRD grant, we still haven't heard. Um, that usually comes around jamboree. So we'll just wait. City staff still needs to finish the water line at the dog park. Their goal is to get it done this month. We've had injuries and COVID sickness and all kinds of things. So just keeping the list going. Um, I still have not gotten more information back from ODOT on their investigation. I tried to talk him into when they come out to inspect that they would come and walk the thing with me. I don't know if that'll go, but we're ears open. Um, we did have all of the aluminum railings bent and damaged at the snack shack, so we removed all of them. Um, we're going to have to find something that's less risk to vandal, to being. I don't know what you do. It's kind of crazy, the amount of just fun damage people like to have, but. Um, and then I am out of the office Wednesday through Friday to take my child to college orientation. So.
Which college?
Oh, it's you.
Oh, orientation though.
Well, we have to get there, right? Stay overnight. Then it's all day, the twenty-first, the morning of the twenty-second, then come home. So.
I bet you didn't have to pull a sixteen foot trailer.
Oh. Is that what you had to do?
Oh, yeah.
I just got a motel.
Says, Dad, don't pull up front. I'm embarrassed. I said, no, I'm pulling right up front.
Oh, no, you were Uncle Eddie with the trailer.
Bring all this stuff to a little dorm room.
She possibly fit in one of those.
Like four or five boxes of shoes.
Right?
Stay in the dorm room. They're not very big.
The SUV was completely packed.
Oh, man.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, hopefully my daughter will just fill the SUV and that's it.
So that's how mom met my daughter was, uh, here comes the trailer girl.
Yeah.
I move across the country in a Jetta.
I can sit back to them.
Anyway, it's a fun experience.
Yeah, I think it'll be great. Get down there. Getting her feet wet.
Any questions for the city minister? Comments?
Do we want to give a quick rundown on the trees?
Yeah, I missed that meeting due to some COVID illness myself. So it's kind of.
It was pretty positive that the main takeaway I think from them was like, stop looking for a tree that's perfect and pick a tree that's most suitable. Um, and it'll last as long as it lasts. And when it doesn't, you should have a plan in place to replace it. Um, and they gave us, I think about three options that weren't any of the ones we had previously looked at, they thought would be good. And they suggested, not that we were going to have so many of them, but to maybe try to do a couple different types. Um, so that if we saw that something was working better than others, it'd be kind of an in-place experiment.
Interestingly, they said this side of the road is probably conducive for the trees. The other side, if there's constant sun, is probably very taxing on a tree.
In the power.
In the power line.
Well, yeah, they weren't kind of looking even at our risks. They were looking like, where, where would a tree grow and where would it have a hard time growing?
Or that it would have to be, it was basically, it's a totally different set. You would have to be looking at totally different trees.
Yeah.
Would need more water. Um.
Yeah, they'd have to be more drought tolerant.
Like the side where the business owners actually are on board is the better side, the easier side.
Yeah. And they didn't, wouldn't have to open the entire channel. You'd have six foot openings. I still don't understand when you don't have the gaps, how those roots are going through that compacted rock. That doesn't seem real to me. But that's what they said. So we'll.
The pavers aren't impacting whether they're going.
Well, they, they put rock in instead of dirt. So roots will travel through the rock and not lift sidewalks. I've read before too.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Maybe it'll go through rock and just, you know, I don't know.
Yeah. So the tricky thing is once I come back to you guys with the owners or people willing, we don't have any money figured out for this because that money just was in the fund and rolled into cash carry forward and was distributed differently through the budget committee. So we'll have to talk about that.
What do you mean? The line item's not there now?
No.
I thought it was. I was going to look at that.
I don't think it was.
It talked about.
A chunk of it came out for the baskets and all the stuff.
We were waving that in.
But I don't think the full twen-
The current cost.
Full twenty is not there.
Yeah.
I feel like some of it is.
Yeah, I could go grab my budget.
Five trees. We don't really need twenty either.
Right. So that, that'll be one thing. We'll bring that back to you. What exists there for that? And then we do have money in the budget for next spring's baskets. So we got to make sure we don't take that as money for trees when we're talking. But that'll be a follow-up thing for you guys.
Any other questions or discussions for the CA?
I had one for the chief of police, but he's not here.
No.
So.
Can I help you?
Well, Lynn and I both had several people ask us about the inn. About it being a rehab center for Columbia County.
Well, I know CCMH is working with a couple of case people that are staying there. I don't know it about it being a, you, when you say rehab, are you meaning somewhere they're putting transitional people that were homeless going not homeless or, or more.
Drug rehab, alcohol rehab.
I have not heard that.
I've had several people and Linda's had several people ask us about that.
Meaning like you think they're allowing people to stay there that are in treatment or that's where they're putting people with issues?
They're, they're letting them out and supposedly to get their treatment or whatever, they're staying there and then transferring out.
Interesting. Well, I can make a few phone calls and see.
Supposedly community action teams helping with the rent.
Well, I know that's what I'm talking about. There's a couple of cases that community action team is paying for them to stay there, but they're not drug treatment people. So that's maybe a mix. Maybe I.
We definitely know one that was there to come out of jail from drug rehab, drug problems.
Okay.
Problem went back in.
Oh, okay. Well, I can make some calls and see what they're doing over there. I don't know what recourse we have, being it's private, if that's the agreement they're doing with people, but, um.
Well, I just think we need to, if they're doing something like that, everybody be more aware of it. Keep an eye out for things.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Um, I will put, I have that written down to give them a call and see what people they have there. Cause that'd be good to know. And I can also talk to Sergeant Carnahan. He can get back with you if there was more info.
And the other one, cause JR brought it up, the sidewalk, the handicap, how they were pouring the cement where they went out in the street on the first ones. It looked like Parker did it on this last one.
Mm-hmm. Well, and it's not the foot of the curb. Because that's how ODOT's requiring a lot of them in Forest Grove to do it. They have a band of concrete and it busts the asphalt. Is that what you're talking about?
It's in the plans that way.
That's how they're doing it all through downtown Forest Grove. Or the ODOT, where ODOT's doing it themselves.
Yeah.
And you're used to the asphalt budding up to the curb. And I think they require a band. I'll look in the plans, but I think it's part of their weird requirement.
I've just never seen it before. I noticed they did pour it that way. They matched the hatch or something there.
Yes.
Yeah, let me, uh.
That one looked just as steep as the other.
Like.
Yeah, it was like point something of a percent.
What's this? Is it Spencer where they're for, it's tore up? We're waiting on the one there too, or?
Uh, we were waiting for KLS to do a manhole elevation before they dig that one out. So they just back dug it out and then backed, backed it over with gravel.
Waiting on KLS, huh?
Yeah. They're supposed to have, I want to say this.
I think it got sent to, it got sent to Robert.
So maybe now we're engineering to make sure that the design works for ODOT.
So are we good now then to get them out here inspection and then we apply for the grant?
If they get out here and inspect it. My goal would be just, we apply with a letter that says your inspection, did it made us go over and we're applying anyway. But.
When's our, when's our hard date on that?
July thirty-first.
Ooh. That's it.
If they don't come inspected in the next two weeks, we're out of luck.
And have they ground those two on you, Matilla?
I don't know. Anne and Parker heard it, but. Yeah, I don't know. I'll have to ask that one too.
So I have a question too, Josette. No lifeguard this, for this summer?
No.
Okay. We will not put up the lifeguard chair then.
Come at your own risk. The school, when Dana was there, they, she did a lot of promoting of that. And then we had all our lifeguards that were kind of in the families that were doing it kind of age out. And no more takers that want to go get certified.
I wonder if we should place an ad though, just to say we've done our due diligence to try to hire one.
Place an ad?
Yeah, like in the paper, looking for a lifeguard like we usually do.
Oh.
So we're not, if we don't try to hire one, how do we know we can hire one?
Well, typically they're young people that are in the school system that have interests. So they talked to them in the school and nobody had interest in getting certified this year.
I'm just thinking from a liability standpoint.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it's posted. I don't believe we have to have it because it is a natural, uh, water feature. It's not like a chemical pool you're keeping pH on.
I wish you checked that last year because we didn't have one last year.
Yeah, or we only had partial. Um.
What worries me is sometimes it seems like there's kids down there by themselves and hardly anybody around, but.
Parenting.
I mean, that's kind of the.
Just because you say nobody's supposed to be here without a parent. Sometimes you see kids down there.
I know. If they're ten or older, they can be crazily in the state of Oregon. If they're ten or under, they should have a supervisor.
I've been down there a few times lately and there's sadly a nine-year-old girl that just wanders around there by herself most of the time.
Yeah.
When that comes down to even if there was a lifeguard, they're not a babysitter, right? Like.
Right.
Parents shouldn't be.
Hopefully we can get one back in the near future.
My little guy's waiting till August twentieth when he will be ten and I will let him go by himself. Well, I, I'm like, are you going? And he's like. Going with Son says, Mom, I go, if the mom leaves, you're coming, huh? I know.
Okay, anything else for the? Okay.
So. Yeah, we've had, I think, a few council meetings. We haven't had an officer here present.
Mm-hmm.
That, in a way, opens kind of a door. Security question. You know? Cause we're defenseless in here.
Yeah.
He won't let me pack, so. Or, you know, we've always had that police presence at meetings and if we head into contentious issues, that's a security concern.
Yeah. I got one. I can make him come to these meetings, but then I have to make him not be here for the citizens on other meet, on other times. So.
Even the county wants to come once in a while.
They'll probably charge us double.
Yeah. We're in a tough situation right now.
Yeah, if there's something contentious, I'm definitely going to have him come and adjust his schedule. But I didn't think any of these were. Right? I guess. I, yeah.
So. You brought up the police department and I know it's, I know my situation, but I have had a couple of citizens lately approach me and want to know what's going on with our police department or no, they're worried their businesses are unprotected and stuff. So I thought I'd ask you for an update on at least a new hire or if you. I know we talked about it's coming on and do you have a date?
Yeah. So I wrote the conditional letter of, of employment today. The goal is that if he signs it, he's starting August first. Passed, uh, medical and psych very well. Um, so Sean's gonna start him on, get him to Blumenthal's to get outfitted and then start him on field training. Um, we the academy has had openings in October. Those are filled. We're on their cancellation list. And then it wouldn't be until December if we don't get a cancellation of the October dates.
But he can work.
Yes, he can do all the, he can side by side with Sergeant Carnahan and do basically the field training manual, which is just a manual where they have to encounter the different things they'll be doing. So traffic stop, intoxication, domestic, all the things.
So you gotta be paired up then.
Yeah.
It's still productive.
Yes, field trains anyway. Yeah. So then that means once he comes, if we can get all the field training done when he gets out of academy, then he can have a short window of pal around and then be on his own.
Maybe Todd can give him special training on council meeting security and then we can.
We could. We could have him have, sit in. Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
What do we, did we ever, um, how's that moving forward about the county with the full time? Have we decided, are we pursuing that at the moment?
We're not pursuing that at the moment. We're having a hard time with their scheduling. Basically they've told us when their officer's going to be here in the area and then Haylen Valley and how many hours we can bank on for them to be in the city limits. And then we've adjusted our schedule to kind of opposite that. There are hours where they. There are hours where they have someone on in the county. And we're trying to give Sean a respite from being on call 24 hours a day so he can actually sleep and eat and not, you know, be stressed out. They sent back a letter saying that if they get called out, they're gonna ask us for reimbursement during those hours. Even though for six of the seven of them, they have someone on duty. That should be serving the citizens of Columbia County that pay the taxes. So it kind of turned us off of moving forward with the second amendment because the amendment said May and when a patrol officer is available.
Well, that's kind of what I was, one of my concerns. And I read the meeting minutes about the gal that had issue with getting someone to respond.
Yeah.
That was, our officers were in the county or did that happen when the county was?
It was, happened when the county was on and they acknowledged in our meeting with them that it was a failure. They should have, it was in progress. Lack of backing up a restraining order and they should have sent a deputy. That's a priority call. You don't not come for that.
So was it the county that showed up four days later? Was it one of?
It was us.
So it just goes into like the queue of un.
It should not have ever gone there because it was a priority call. The kinds that Sean should come back to are dog at large. Neighbor's dog, neighbor put their fence post on my property. Those are the things that someone could come back to. That kind of priority call, they dropped the ball. And we made sure that they knew that and that we expected. And we went through our priority call list. Ours exactly matched the county's. We don't have any weird one offs that we expect them to come for that they wouldn't already come for. Ours Columbia City and Rainier differ a little than us, but we're same exact priority call order as the county.
Do you know what it would take for the state police to respond? If county's not available, we don't have an officer under. Does the state police ever get involved or does it take like a?
I think it would have to be some major, major crime. Like either a circuit of crime or some multiple death crime. It won't be an individual priority crime before the staters come.
Only times I remember them coming as a citizen was active shooters.
Yeah.
And they happened to have me close enough to respond.
They do have.
Everyone responds.
That's something 911 handles though, right?
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll send whoever depending on the call and depending on who's available. There are staters out in North Plains. That's the MRT group that's helping us with jamboree. So we have a connection there. So if something were to go awry, someone's coming. Our goal is to get back to who we can hire and get able-bodied police officers that work for the city. That's our goal.
I like that goal too.
Yeah.
Do we have room to hire more or is just the one?
We currently have to wait until one of the other two officers is either uh, out on disability and cannot be a cop or comes back. Those are, we're just waiting on those two. And I think we have two more weeks before Officer Brown has his first, uh, physical review. So we'll know how he's healing and.
Is it against the rules or is there a available opportunity to hire a temporary? Like a retired cop that, hey, we need you for three months and that's all it's gonna be? Or is there anything like?
I haven't looked into that. I'm sure you could potentially do that, but with all the departments hurting for hires. I mean, the county's hiring right now.
Seattle wants 400, doesn't it?
Yeah, there's a ton of people hiring and then with that lateral transfer comes a lot of money. Because they're already certified. They're coming in as step two, maybe even a three, and then you're paying a chunk of change.
Lateral transfer, that means poaching.
Means he's got skill and he's coming and wanting to leave an area. But yeah.
Ready to go.
Yeah.
Guy.
Put him in a car and let him go.
Is there been any more development with the school?
No, we sent them over. Um, I did have a meeting with the superintendent. I didn't.
I was gonna report on that.
Okay, um, I'm, we met with the superintendent, the mayor and Sean and I. Um, and he is interested in an SRO being back in the schools. The feds have put down a huge chunk of money for SROs since the Uvalde shooting. So we're working through what that funding looks like, which group would have to go for it. How much each group would have to backfill that. And then I, we're sending them all the kind of domestic terrorist. That's what the county and the city have in their emergency operation plans, but it could be same as an active shooter. And so we're, he's, we're sharing with Jim Helman, all of the plans that the county and city already have in place and the fire department um, for those kind of events.
Pretty much summed up my report, but I will add, he's very open to questions and suggestions and we had a great meeting as far as I'm concerned.
Very. I think he's gonna.
Very positive.
I think he's gonna be a good.
I do too.
Superintendent.
So if we have a injured officer or has to have some.
Yeah.
Who determines when they come back? How does that work? Cause you have a police department union that determines it?
No, so, uh, when they go out for medical leave, their doctor has to sign a note and then they have to have a fitness for duty physical. And if they cannot pass that, they cannot come back to work here. It basically takes the risk out of the city, putting them back in the law enforcement position. Because of the job criteria, we do not want someone that can't turn their head, can't bend down, can't wrestle someone.
Is that, is that a police policy or is that a city policy?
Um, it's for our insurance and it's in the handbook. It's in the city handbook that we can require a fitness for duty for any employee that goes out with a medical, uh, leave.
Can require. Or have we required it for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if someone out went out with like an abscess tooth, that doesn't probably warrant a fitness for duty if their abscess has gone.
Like a doctor or?
What?
A fitness for duty. It's like a occupational therapist or?
Um, it's based on their job description. So they have to do things specifically related to their job description in the physical. It isn't just bend over and touch your knees. It's.
That's something we pay for.
Uh, it's part of their, just in their own doctor and insurance and copays. Usually it's occupational health that does the fitness for duty. Not a primary physician.
And the doctor has to sign off on it in order for you to return.
Yeah.
Hoping that won't be something where oh, I gotta wait six months for that appointment now or something.
Oh, no. The minute we think they're healing, we would say the minute their doctor releases them, we're expecting that. So they, we'd expect them to get that appointment lined up well ahead of that.
So how does that work with Americans with disability access? People have sometimes a little disability, but they still work.
Yeah. So if we had hired someone with disability, then that wouldn't first doing the job, then that wouldn't be an issue. Um, when we hired the two officers, they did not have a disability. So if they were to get labeled with a disability, then potentially that's like retirement through the police union. Because if they're unable to do the job.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Can we move on to? Item 15, items from counselors.
I.
Anything?
Went up at the cemetery. Walked over, took a look at Princess Viny.
Oh, yeah.
It's grown, so.
Did you, were the weeds around it samped down yet?
Yeah, it wasn't too bad.
Casey went and like crop circled around it to crimp all the weeds around and end up get it flat.
Didn't remember to go give it a drink of water.
Yeah, he was gonna take his weed whacker up there and. Yeah.
Did go up and water the lower half of the Ora Beaumarner trees. Um, I did see some mice girdling on some of the hardwood tree, just one of them that was really
That's all that.
Covered over.
Okay.
Uh, and they were trying to girdle around the base. So that was the only one I saw. Um, the cedar trees actually are looking pretty good.
Yeah, the green came back on the lower branches, which I was really surprised.
Yeah, I mean, even the little guys.
Yeah.
And the big ones are, they're growing.
Nice pot of water in June really helped.
Yeah.
So yeah, I kind of mixed feelings. I mean, we probably need to go in there and weed whack around them eventually, but we might I'm gonna wait.
You want to be really careful doing that.
Yeah.
You'll girdle them.
Well, one of the things that Casey's making for the guys is how they do it at Evergreen is they have just a pipe. They've sliced and hinged. And you just put the pipe around the tree and then you just weed whack, hit the pipe, keep going. So we'll have one of those for Tim to use for the next round.
The ones, those little trees with the vexar on them, it stops it too, so. But, uh, I don't know, it looked like I couldn't, I only found one vine. I couldn't find any other.
So Tim had weed whacked around a few and then the deer came and ate all the leaves off. So he quit on the other ones. Cause he's like, I'm just gonna let them just get growing with cover.
Yeah.
Instead of having all the leaves nibbled.
Yeah, we might have to cage them or something for a deer to get them up. I don't know.
Yeah.
Any movement on dedication of that peace tree?
Oh, yeah.
Um, no, so Michael's been watering it. He has the plaque. He was requesting kind of a shallow dig out and some rock in a path type thing before we do the grand opening. So uh, Mitch has been kind of strapped.
I'd hand him a shovel.
I know. Uh, he's been kind of tasked with helping Tim because Tim was ill, uh, with parks. So he caught up on cemetery and then he's gonna do the building maintenance things, which includes that.
I think Michael also said at the meeting.
Wonderful, yeah.
And he was having issues getting it scheduled too.
Yeah.
With the representative.
I was gonna say, I think he's, yeah, I remember.
I thought he said fall.
The person.
Yeah, I thought he said fall, but I don't know. I'll have to check with him. He was pushing back because he really wanted the woman to come if that was possible.
Oh.
It wasn't necessarily us he's waiting for. He's trying to spread with people.
Yeah, but he did ask about a little path, which isn't gonna be hard to do.
Maybe not in the heat of the summer.
Yeah.
They're sweating.
Yeah. And he was trying to navigate and she's 90, the woman that started the peace tree movement. And he really wanted her to come up, but she's coming up to this area for another thing. And he was trying to network the two at the same time or something.
Salem, they're, they're having a big get together for the peace tree.
Oh.
And they were looking for elected officials to go to that. I was up there separate from our group.
Oh.
Afterwards, they were talking about it.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and, and that comment that was it Katie?
Yeah.
Can't remember the guy's name. They did compliment our enclosure. They said it was.
The nicest one in the state.
The best in the state, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
On me.
Yeah.
Mitch did a good job on that.
Yeah, it looks good. It's getting watered, growing. Hopefully it's male.
Yeah, his dad was there when I was up watering the other day. He come, he come up with her milk jokes.
There was citizen feedback that came in as someone on parks about, um, it was saying there was like cow parsnip along the trail at the back of the lake. So I walked it. The day I was down there and I only found one single plant that is like literally against the trail. I mean, it's only an issue if someone's like breaking it to get the sap on themselves or adjusting it. So I don't really think that.
Invasive?
It's not, it's native.
Oh.
It's just like the sap burns you and then if you eat it, it's toxic. But, and we have a lot of toxic plants and I would expect that people aren't going around parks eating them.
Or looking at it.
Especially the children with the cow parsnip. They don't know.
Yeah. So I don't know if that person, like if
They haven't come.
They would want it removed or what. I mean, I found literally one single plant.
I looked and I didn't even see it.
I found, it was one at the back, like between the lake and the river. And there were more like on the riverbank, but that's not.
Yeah.
Oh, worthy. I can hear.
It's a single plant of cow parsnip.
Cow parsnip?
One.
Parsnip.
Oh. I don't know.
It's like Queen Anne's lace, but it's really big. So when my kids have tried to get into it, it's because the leaves are huge. So they like to try and get them and play with them.
Oh.
So I'm like, huh?
Yeah.
It's like blistering, right?
It looks.
Bad blistering.
All Queen Anne's lace are poison hemlock, but instead of the frondy leaves, it has these big, big green leaves, solid leaves.
And you can get like blister boils if it gets on you.
Yeah.
Guess I've been lucky. I didn't know what it was. I never got into it.
Or I don't, you don't go around and like rub plants on you.
Just wait.
Only sourdough after stinging nettles. That will work every time.
Really?
Yeah.
I didn't know.
That's the antidote.
Huh.
Stinging nettle?
Sour dock.
Sour dock.
It takes nettle sting away.
Really good to know. Okay, I'm ready to stand.
Now you gotta find it for your cures.
Tell us where that roughly is. We can have Tim remove it.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, it's literally like.
Right across from camp.
No. All right. So if you go down past the fuel house and turn, I'd save maybe 25% of the way. Once you turn before it turns again. It's before like the honor congregation zone. It's more like the zones where they're maybe just crossing.
On the left or right side?
It'll be right. You're coming count, if you're going counterclockwise, it's on your right.
Okay.
On the right side, yeah.
You can get some flagging and put close to it to make it easier for them to find.
I could.
Some ribbon.
If they need me, I can go follow.
Okay.
I can also go pull it out. I didn't know what the policy was.
Why did the?
It'd probably be the easiest.
I'll go pull it out. I need to take a new picture anyway for the voice website. Oh, the cow.
Mother of small dumb children, I thank you.
Oh, and then the other thing I was gonna ask, a meeting with Kim, um, to start working on the brochure for the parks that they want. Um, can I get like the, the tree logo and stuff that we can put on the front? Obviously we won't, we're not gonna have it printed without.
Yeah.
Fruitful, but.
Yeah, we just have a, um, file I can send you with all the bright pan tones and everything.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else?
Like was very busy weekend. But I did walk through there both days and counted close to 20 pace lips each day. And that's just when I walked through, so.
Yeah.
It was a lot of out of towners having a good time.
Good.
Are you pumping Dale?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that the plan to get it full before water curtailment kicks in?
Yeah. Kind of got behind because I was looking at my past records. I'm, I'm behind where I usually am. I had to shut down there for a while when the algae got so bad in the river. When it did come on, it came on for vengeance this year. And now it's, now it's really slowing down at that string algae. And they probably, I don't know if you see my post.
Moss breakup flow?
It, I posted in Facebook there about people, you're using that area. The one person there, their dog ran down there and just mucked the water. I just cleaned the screens and it just sucked it in. But they break up that algae too strings and it goes, I, I've had the brush come up just totally covered in a wad of algae. And if you go down there, you'll see where I've been dumping on the bank here and there. That really closed the screens up. Here the last couple of days, it's really, really slowed down. It's the amps on the meters are hardly dropping in a day's time. Whereas before they'd be going for 14 amps, they'd be down either shutting themselves off, the coyote switches or be down around 10, 11 amps. The amps drop when you restrict the flow or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. And earlier in the year, I'd go two days before checking.
So it's an algae bloom or the moss flow?
Well, it's kind of, yeah, it's what we call the moss out there in the river, but it's actually the string algae.
Cause 4th of July, I was down at Spruce Run camping and you couldn't even throw a rooster tail hardly because you're catching moss every two seconds. I call it moss. It's just big chunks were flowing down, right?
Yeah.
But it's an algae, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's actually an algae. Tough stuff. Yeah, it was going wide open. So I'm, I'm trying to get pumped up at this warm and breezy little weather. It's I'm lucky if I get a quarter inch a day where in the spring I, I can get uh, over six tenths of an inch a day.
Is that one pump going or?
All three. Yeah, all three. Did what it is.
Where is our river flow right now?
Uh, we're 31 and something.
We're still setting daily records on the Cook Creek gauge.
It's not crazy.
We got a good flow.
You did?
I couldn't.
Water curtailment or is that?
Typically, we barely make it.
Long ways from it.
Yeah.
Typically, we barely make it to Jamboree. Seems like we're on it. Or just after Jamboree, a little after Jamboree, end of August.
Some way, it was volunteer.
Yeah.
It's not dropping very fast. One of these cloudy days.
They try to wash in my rain barrels, so I need to know. I should just use them.
You can use them. We're good at this point.
Yeah, but then as soon as I use them, it'll change.
That's true. You'll jinx us.
Okay. Anything else? Action item summary.
Okay, got a long one. Um, so we're bringing the funds available and more information about turkeys on the August 1st meeting. Parks wants the budget versus actual for their monthly meetings. Notify Mr. Demont that he has been appointed to the Public Works Committee. Uh, move forward with fish ox cycle re, the lease agreement and the electric quote to your August 1st meeting. Get a track update. Uh, send the priority list from the League of Oregon Cities to council and request your ranking and return of those to us so we can share with you at the August 1st meeting what your tallies were. Uh, call CCMH and CAT about the use of the cadenin, they're doing there, what their processes. Look on the ODOT plans if that curb foot is part of it. Uh, talk to Parker, check with Parker if they've ground down Umatilla. Look into a little bit more advertisement on the lifeguards. And send Shreese the branding file. Anything else?
Anything else?
Generator says done. Did you test it?
Yeah, they did the test, but to get the actual inspection for the electrical signed up, I gotta put the bollards in.
The bollards.
Before we have it on and running as a unit and ready to take over.
Ones I have are bolted down, so you'll have to, if it's gotta be poured way down the concrete, I might not be able to.
I don't know that, I'll look. I don't know that it has to be. I think it just has to, somebody has to hit something before they hit that transfer switch. Yeah, it's concrete base and it's just a fenced in trash enclosure that they just roll their dumpster into, but it's about double the size of the dumpster. Okay, I'll check with Blake tomorrow and see what he, what the spec calls for. Sure, you can always go overkill. You probably can't go under.
Right. Sometimes you don't have room, right, for a bigger one?
Yeah, they probably have 12 feet across there and their, their dumpster takes up like four when it comes in and then it kind of goes to the front away from the walls. I'll measure it.
If it says it's gotta be anchored in a foot of concrete with epoxy and all that.
I would hope not. It's up against a building, so they're gonna hit the building before they. Cause the transfer switch is mounted on the building and these have to be below it, so nothing runs into it.
One inch hole. Usually run a big titan, which is just a big wood screw for concrete.
Yeah.
Discuss a big seven inch titans, three quarter inch diameter.
Okay.
Pretty simple.
I'll look into it. Pre bollards, be the way to go.
They have to wait six months then.
I hate for the supplier, Shane, to let me have a bollard.
Did we ever do anything, investigate about the wild rabbits? Are the rabbits?
We didn't.
They searched, they don't do anything. There is a group in Can, Cannon Beach. It's like a nonprofit group that they can capture them and rehome them, but there's not, it's too. They kind of encourage people to do what they want to do with them. No one in the state of Oregon, I remember all the different entities that were listed regulates them. And it's not exactly a popular thing for a city to dispose of them.
Can't you just trap them and take them out somewhere else?
That's where the private citizens are encouraged to do as they will.
Citizens aren't doing that.
Yeah.
There was like a little coven of them, like.
It's like a pocket of them there.
And I was like.
Was it on Coryville or something?
Yeah.
I've never seen.
They're always sitting out on the porch of my little.
They're around the airport.
My house when I go there. I, I find them very endearing and have no problem with them.
That's also, but some people love them and feed them. Other people make them disappear.
Yeah. They're like raccoons. You start feeding them, they'll hang around.
Yeah.
And populate.
Yeah.
They've made it to Madison Avenue too.
Oh, man. They're hanging out at the Norman property.
A lot of deer. I placed them.
For their dinner.
Free deer living in my place.
Only three?
Yours all just smiling. I've had a given it away.
Almost came up on my porch today.
They keep eating the duck food. The ducks, yeah, and the ducks scream. The ducks just stand there like.
What the dog food?
Something about it and they don't, they just yell.
The duck food?
Yeah, the deer eating like the poultry.
They'll eat anything.
Yes.
Wow.
Kind of corn. Going once, going twice. I will adjourn the meeting at 9:15. Meeting adjourned.